Hello, everybody. Tim Galbraith, hashtag Lapeer. Thank you for joining me. I took a minute to watch the first city commission with newly elected Mayor Jeremy Hing and newly elected city commissioner Lynn McCarthy. You know, transparency is important to me. If you read my last piece, I talk about media bias and again transparency. And you know, I endorsed Mindy Schwab. That's, you can go check out the video if you're interested to see my thoughts on why I thought she would have been the best person for this job. That doesn't mean I don't want to see Mayor Hing do great things because I do. I've lived in Lapeer since 2019. I love it here. I choose to stay here. You know, for those who don't know, I really had a serious struggle in my life at the time of my arrival here. And I think the change that is taking place inside of me is not a coincidence that it happened here. I'm very grateful for the people who've come into my life in this city. So I love it and I want to see Mayor Hing and the commissioners do great things. Nevertheless, I do think watchdogs are important. Indie journalists matter. I'm a little disappointed that the county press doesn't do endorsements. Traditionally, they don't do mayoral endorsements. That's not to say they don't do good work. In fact, I think Jeff Hogan is a great guy. He's a professional. He's just, man, he's been so consistent in this community for so long that he deserves our respect and gratitude. So this is not an attack. But if you look at the news and the Free Press in Detroit, they both, I believe, endorsed Mary Sheffield to become Detroit's mayor. It's not atypical of newspapers to do that. So even the county press, I believe, endorsed John Miller to become prosecutor over the incumbent Mike Sharkey a few years back. So the county press will do it. I think it's more important than ever to go out on a limb and support the people that you believe in. That's why I did what I did. In the past, I haven't gone out of my way to do endorsements. I don't have the ego to believe that it makes much of a difference. But you know, I'm always trying to do what's right and it just felt right to me. So I needed to put that out there as well as the fact that I reached out to Mayor Hing after he won for a couple of attempts on Facebook. It was the only way I really knew how to try, hoping to get a quick interview with him. He seems disinclined. I mean, maybe he didn't see it, but my guess is he just doesn't want to do it and that's fine. You know, I have different challenges as a kind of indie journalist because it's well known that I will take on issues that frankly, the county press probably won't. And I understand why the county press is going to be very, very careful and diligent before it makes any deep investigative dive into anything that's going on. First off, there's budgetary issues. I'm sure that makes that difficult, but also I know they don't want to get sued. I have already been issued a cease and desist in the past. It is connected to why none of my content is allowed in Lapeer News and Discussion. It's a story for another day. It just is what it is. I'm going to keep trying to do my thing because again, I love Lapeer and I feel like doing this is one of the ways I can have a big impact in this community. So at least the biggest impact I'm capable of having. I can do some good with this platform, I believe. So subscribe to my Substack. Really, even a free subscription helps. Any support helps. Sharing it out makes a difference. Even if you disagree with what you hear in this video, I hope that you will at least come to understand that it is a good faith effort on my part to keep the community informed. Nothing I say is a personal attack and I'm going to go out of my way to make that as clear as I can. Doesn't mean that there isn't criticism coming because there is. I think this meeting was not a great start to the Hing administration, for lack of a better phrase. I think it could have gone better for sure and hopefully it will. Hopefully in the future, he will, I mean, you'd have to believe he'll grow into the position, right? It was his first time, so I'm not trying to be too hard. But nevertheless, because I know there's, to my knowledge, nobody out there doing video breakdowns of things like this. And even if there were, there's still a place for me. I believe I've been paying attention to what's going on in Lapeer for many years. But enough trying to put my credentials and bias in front of everybody again. I love Lapeer. I'm paying attention to what's going on. I'm just sharing my thoughts. Take them or leave them. So with that said, let's watch some clips from the commission meeting, just a few, and I'll tell you what I think. Okay, so here we go. We're Mayor Pro Tem election. One of the first things right off the bat, first order of business, right? So that's essentially what happens if Mayor Hing can't make it or what have you. Who sits in? I believe before this, it was Commissioner Atwood. But I'll be quiet so you can watch this unfold.
We will now proceed with the election of Mayor Pro Tem. Nominations are now open.
Mr. Mayor?
I recognize Commissioner Glickman.
Thank you. I would like to nominate at this time Commissioner Melissa Petrie.
Commissioner Glickman nominates Commissioner Petrie. Are there any other nominations? Commissioner Brady?
I wish to nominate Commissioner Atwood.
Commissioner Brady nominates Commissioner Atwood. Are there any further nominations? Nominations are now closed. The clerk will now call, roll in alphabetical order for each nominee. Ms. Sanchez?
Okay, for Commissioner Petrie, as Mayor Pro Tem. Commissioner Atwood?
No.
Commissioner Brady?
No.
Commissioner Glickman?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarthy?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
For Commissioner Atwood. Commissioner Atwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
No.
Commissioner Glickman?
No.
Commissioner McCarthy?
No.
Commissioner Petrie?
No.
All right. Congratulations to Commissioner Petrie.
Glickman?
No.
So kind of a humorous moment there. Commissioner Brady said no. He was the one who nominated Commissioner Atwood, says no when the vote comes because it was already decided. It's going to be Commissioner Petrie. And you know, I, I'm really interested now that I'm paying closer attention than ever to see how Commissioner Petrie operates, right? I saw some things in this meeting that I thought, yeah, we're good. You know, when she ran for commission, she didn't interview with me. Usually every, I think she was the first one to ever decline. I interviewed Commissioner Brady, for example, and she was pretty straight up with me. She said, you know, she just didn't think it was in the best interest of her campaign, which I totally respected. She's always friendly with me when I see her on the street. So it's a small town. We run into each other. Again, I'm pro Lapeer City Commission, right? No hard feelings. Would it be cool to sit down and talk to her? It'd be cool to sit down and talk to her tomorrow. None of this is going to happen, but yeah, I just want to put that out there. You'll see her do a couple of things that I'll comment on here shortly. All right, so again, props to Commissioner Petrie, but I will say it, it's kind of an upset. I don't know. Commissioner Atwood had been in that position before. I believe he's definitely got the most experience on the commission. He was nominated. He voted for himself. He seemed to want to do it, but we see a block here, right? We see the women stick together. Now, it's not, I'm not saying it's because of their gender, but just, I told you I was going to keep score and I am. Commissioner Glickman, I believe, made the nomination and then Commissioner McCarthy and Commissioner Petrie supported it. Thus, three to two, Commissioner Petrie becomes the Mayor Pro Tem. And hey, that's good for her. That's, that's, I have no problem with that. But I'm just, like I said, I'm keeping score. Who votes with who? And I, because I think even in this meeting alone, we'll see how there are blocks forming, I guess, and that's politics.
And we can take a, if we could take a moment before we take our approval of the agenda, the chair wishes to propose an amendment. As this is the first regular meeting seated with newly sworn commissioners, we have not had adequate time to review several substantial items appearing under administrative reports, the city manager's report, and unfinished business. These include event applications, zoning matters, road proposals, and appointments. You'll find these in sections G, H, and J. I feel that it is important to do research and be deliberative about our actions. It's more important to get things right rather than to get them fast. To ensure transparency, proper notice, and adequate review, the chair moves to postpone all items under sections G, H, and J to the next regular meeting on December 1st, 2025. That is the motion of the chair. Is there a second?
Mr. Francis, is the chair capable of making a motion?
In the past, we haven't. I'm not aware of your procedural rules if that generally the mayor does not make the motion.
He can ask that that motion be made.
Correct.
If that's custom, can you please, Mr. Francis, provide or cite your authority?
It's custom.
Okay. Is it, is it then custom, Mary? Because I had my script for adjournment, which I believe I follow custom of the previous mayor, Mark Court, where she moves to adjourn the meeting. Is that custom?
In this body, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Francis, I believe also in Robert's Rules of Order, if adjournment is written into the agenda and it's the only remaining item, then the chairperson can call for adjournment without a motion.
That's generally what's occurred here.
So this, I think, is super important. Right off the bat, we have Mayor Hing trying to make a motion and they just don't do that in Lapeer, which he challenges, right? The city attorney cites custom. City manager, Mike Womack cites Robert's Rules of Order. And really, anybody who is going to be in politics and going to be on a board of this sort should be well versed in Robert's Rule of Order. Now, it's just kind of the standard go-to how to run a meeting. Now again, I think Mayor Hing deserves grace. He's brand new. It's not so much that he didn't know what the custom was in that he tried to make a motion, you know, maybe that's a faux pas. He's, I feel like trying to argue that it's not. Regardless, I don't have a problem with that type of mistake. There is a certain energy around how this unfolds though, so let's, let's keep watching.
Okay. Then the chair has stated a proposed motion. Do I have a motion?
Point of order. I don't think that we've even gotten a proper motion to be looking for seconds.
I'm not asking for a second. I'm asking for a motion.
You're asking for a motion.
I'll entertain a motion right now.
I move that, exactly what you just said, I don't have it written down, but I move that we postpone, let's see, any action, the administrative reports, which would be G, H, J, until the next meeting, December 1st.
Is there support?
Support.
Commissioner Glickman. There is a motion and support. Motion from Commissioner Petrie and support from Commissioner Glickman to postpone the actions under sections G, H, and J until the next regular meeting on December 1st, 2025. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Brady?
Can you let us know why you're canceling everything on the meeting?
I can repeat myself.
I'm asking the person who's made the motion.
Okay.
Okay, I made the motion because as Jeremy said, or as Mr. Mayor said, Lynn McCarthy and Jeremy are new. There was, there's a lot of detailed information, some of which we just got today, this afternoon, to finish one of the things. And they've had an awful lot of information thrown at them. And if that's what they feel comfortable with, I want to support that. This is our first meeting. I want to support what makes them feel comfortable to move forward. I don't think it's unreasonable. None of it is an emergency.
Okay, so let's stop there real quick because again, we see Commissioner Petrie sort of jump in, in a very clumsy, clunky way, trying to make the motion that Mayor Hing tried to make. We will see how this comes back later on and resurfaces the exact verbiage of the motion, which I think matters as a writer. Words matter. Every word matters. The city attorney sitting there on the screen, he knows damn well, every word in a situation like this matters. So that was not a smooth motion. But again, notice Commissioner McCarthy and Commissioner Glickman get behind it. Eventually, we're going to, or excuse me, Commissioner Petrie makes the motion that the mayor wanted to make himself but couldn't. Commissioner Glickman seconds it. Eventually, Commissioner McCarthy is going to support it. Commissioner Brady is not feeling this, you can see. He's speaking up. He asks, why are we doing this? And there wasn't a moment that felt mildly contentious when the mayor says, I can repeat myself. Okay. Mayor, or Commissioner Brady kind of deftly pointed out that he was asking the person who made the motion, but we, this is like, quick. Like here we are, we're the new mayor and a new commission and we're off to a contentious start. Maybe mildly contentious, but like, it doesn't feel to me like this mayor came in real humble here. Like, and maybe that's nerves, maybe that's the pressure of stepping in to this environment and he's just trying to be mayoral. I don't, I don't know, but here we'll see Commissioner Atwood speak up. Again, the most tenured commissioner, he has so much to offer. I have so much respect for Commissioner Atwood. Don't agree with him on everything, but I respect Commissioner Atwood. So let's take a listen to what he says.
Or pending, you know, anything emerging.
Commissioner Atwood?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, there's three items on here that are all introductions. One's an introduction, two is a set public hearing, so that is ample amount of time to look through all the information. So I don't understand why you would be removing those from tonight's agenda.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, if I may? Not at this time, Mr. Womack. I'm, I'm going to answer, I'm going to answer Commissioner Atwood first. To answer your question, Commissioner Atwood, I haven't had adequate time, neither has Commissioner, Commissioner McCarthy. I've stated the reason why. And I have not approved this agenda. So if you'd like, I can adjourn the meeting.
Now, to me, that moment right there was, I don't want, breathtaking feels like a strong word, but when he's, it felt threatening kind of in a way, like obviously not physical threatening, we would never see that, but if you'd like, I can adjourn the meeting. He's kind of saying, if you, if you don't want to do what I want to do, we can just end the meeting now. Tell me if I'm wrong. I would love to hear comments. Tell me if I'm wrong. But my read on that situation is if you don't want to do things my way, we just won't do anything at all, which, whoa, right? Holy shit, you've been mayor for like five minutes. Slow down. And again, like, I'm just, I'm a human too. So it's easy for people to sling arrows at me. I'm used to it. But I just gotta say, call it like I see it and that's how I see it. So let's, let's keep going.
Yeah. It's up to you. Commissioner McCarthy?
I have a question because I'm new. If you adjourn these, are we still allowed to discuss them at all on the, while it happens? Okay, just need to have that clarity. Someone shook their head over there, am I right? If they're taken off, we don't discuss them till, okay, perfect. Thank you. Just needed that clarity.
Mr. Mayor, if I may? Yes, Mr. Womack.
So one of the hallmarks of the commission meeting is that you can discuss these items and still not take actions. Or take an action that would be of a delaying type of manner such as tabling to another meeting. You know, sometimes by discussing the matter, the commission members find that they do have sufficient information to approve or move forward. So it's, it's a little irregular for the board or the mayor to attempt to, without discussing the matter at least, to just part launch, say, we're going to discuss these at another meeting. Because then what happens if we get to the next meeting and then we say, well, we wish we had discussed it a little bit more. Today is an opportunity to discuss these matters and then if you don't feel comfortable moving forward, then it's proper to make a motion to table for another meeting. That's my opinion.
Okay, thank you for your opinion, Mr. Womack. We will proceed if there is no further discussion. Then we'll proceed with a roll call vote.
Commissioner Atwood?
No.
Commissioner Brady?
No.
Commissioner Glickman?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarthy?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
All right, so the motion carries and that's important. That's important to note. Now again, I feel like Mike Womack, pretty soon I'm going to start dropping all this city manager, Womack, Commissioner Petrie. I'm just going to go by the names. I think he was really just trying to help the new mayor, right? He's just like, yo, this is how we do it. Like, we're just going to talk, bro. You're not, you're not ending up, you're not signing your life away here. This is a safe meeting to have. Nothing explosive is going to happen. And while I do, you know, like, it's cool that the mayor is really going to take his time and make decisions and not be pressured into any decisions. I dig it. I'm for it. He feels a little cocky to me, like he's just not accepting any kind of guidance from far more experienced individuals. You know, the whole, thank you for your opinion felt disingenuous. Like, it didn't feel like he really was like, thank you, Mike, for like, I appreciate it, but I'm still going to try to move forward with this motion I had wanted. It didn't feel like that. It was sort of like, you can take your opinion and shove it. And I might be wrong. I might be wrong. Like, that's, it was probably not quite that hostile. But you know, it was, it was really something. So again, worth pointing out a few things. Number one, the women stuck together. So they supported the mayor again. They voted to remove these items from the agenda. Those are gone. Commissioner Petrie, Commissioner Glickman, Commissioner McCarthy, all supported what Mayor Hing wanted. So those are stricken. There was also a moment where Commissioner McCarthy says, okay, so that means if we take this off, we can't talk about it, right? And, and somebody, I forget who, tells her, yeah, that's the case. Might even been the mayor. Watch how that comes back later on because it does. It, it plays a role later on.
All right. It has been moved, and second, I'm sorry. A motion is now in order to approve the agenda as amended. I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Glickman?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agenda of November 7th as amended.
A second. A motion has been moved by Commissioner Glickman and supported by Commissioner Petrie to approve the November 17th, 2025 agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? Ms. Sanchez, the roll call, please.
Commissioner Brady?
No.
Commissioner Glickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarthy?
Yes.
Commissioner Atwood?
No.
Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve the minutes? Commissioner Petrie?
I, I move that we approve the minutes from the last meeting as presented.
Is there support? It is moved by Commissioner Petrie and supported by Commissioner Glickman to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held November 3rd, 2025. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Brady?
Commissioner McCarthy wasn't here, so she can't vote on whether to approve the minutes.
Yes, she can.
She wasn't here for the minutes?
I understand. It's candidly debatable whether they should be voted on, but yeah, it's, if they happen.
Any further discussion?
If I may, so this is one of those instances where custom probably would allow the minutes to be voted on, but under Robert's Rules, it probably wouldn't.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Can you cite the authority?
Robert's Rules of Order. Would you like me to go to the specific citation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Read it.
Please give me a few minutes. Would you like to adjourn the meeting at this time?
We're going to take a brief recess for two minutes. All right, the recess is now over. Mr. Womack?
So I'm looking at the city's rules and procedures of the city commission, page nine. This would be considered a standing rule under Robert's Rules of Order. A commission member should not vote on the question of approving minutes to be corrected or amended of a meeting in which a member was absent for the reason that such member is unable to determine the accuracy of such minutes. However, as we discussed briefly in the hallway, it has been the custom of the commission, and not just this board, also other boards of the city, that a member has, I know just for a fact, voted on the minutes of meetings that they did not attend. Now, I don't have citation to that. It's obviously a lot of information for me to keep in my head, but I've seen it done. And of course, those were all done by voice vote, generally unanimous. But those are the two rules that we have to consider regarding this specific.
Thank you, Mr. Womack. Mr., well, before I ask, the chair recognizes Commissioner McCarthy?
Can I just abstain?
You can.
And then it just goes forward?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Mayor, if I can ask that she place the reason for the abstention on the record?
I will get there, but before we have her abstain and place her reason, I would like to ask you a question. Since we have two conflicting policies, we have one that's clearly stated that a commissioner that was absent during the meeting of the minutes in question to be voted on should not place a vote, but we also have a rule that the custom should be, should be enforced. Both of those conflict in this moment with this particular topic. What is your legal opinion?
Our rules allow for suspension of the rules, which I would only assume is what occurred when the commissioners voted in the past.
Okay. All right. Or maybe not, maybe no contest against it?
Correct.
That was out of order, that sort of thing? Okay. Very good. Thank you for clarifying, Mr. Francis. And Commissioner McCarthy, you would like to withdraw your vote from the minutes? Can you please state why?
I would like to abstain from my vote on the minutes because I wasn't at that meeting. It's my first meeting in here as an active city commissioner, so I can't vote for it to verify the minutes.
Thank you. The chair recognizes that. I don't think it needs to be voted on. And we're ready for a roll call vote. Ms. Sanchez, for the approval of the minutes?
Commissioner Glickman?
Yes.
Commissioner Petrie?
Yes.
Commissioner, oops, McCarthy?
Abstain.
Commissioner Atwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Brady?
Yes.
Okay. So I think Commissioner McCarthy made it really easy. I'll just abstain. Let's just like, look, this is, they're gonna, we're gonna approve the minutes, right? We all want to approve the minutes so that we can have a meeting. We are now. We are now 23 minutes into this meeting and only really had ceremonial moments and bickering. So like, props to Commissioner McCarthy for just being like, "I'll just sit out." And again, if Mayor Hing really wants to like drill down on the procedures, that makes sense as a brand-new mayor, for sure, I get it. But there's also like opportunity to do that outside of the meeting, right? Like, you can definitely, Mike Womack mentioned, we talked in the hallway, right? They, you could learn outside, not necessarily on the job in the moment so much. So, I don't know, like, it just felt, again, it feels kind of unnecessary, and it feels like he's not receiving guidance that is really well-intentioned and like simple stuff. Like, there's, you're not getting tricked into anything here. It's just like, this is, these are the basics. I don't know how many meetings he's attended before this, right? If you attend a bunch of city commission meetings before being elected, I think you'd be more apt to know how things go. So my feeling is that he probably didn't attend very many. Kind of neither here nor there, but just my thoughts on that.
So we will move on to administrative reports. Administrative reports, as section G and H and J have been postponed to December 1st for our prior vote. No action will be taken on these items tonight, but Mr. Womack, do you have anything to report on those items?
I mean, without going through each individual item and that they've been struck from the record, I guess I don't have anything to say regarding city manager's report, thank you.
Very good. Move on to city manager's report. Again.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, you struck H from the agenda?
Yes.
Are you asking me to?
I didn't strike it from the agenda entirely. I struck the actionability of the items, G, H, and J. But I will allow for the reports to be made informatively if you have something you'd like to share.
Madam Clerk, have they been removed from the agenda? Was that the original?
G was removed. G, H, and J. G, H, and J were removed. That's the way I have the motion.
Now, Commissioner, or Clerk Ramona Sanchez says, "It was removed." Mind you, she's been doing this a long time. There is a lot of experience in this group of people, and she is saying it's been removed. So that's, to me, it's worth noting.
The motion. Remind me who made the motion?
Me.
Commissioner Petrie.
And Commissioner Petrie, is it your recollection that you use the term "remove the items" or that we would take no action on those items?
I, I, I don't know.
I think-
I didn't have it written down from me, so I was trying to remember how you said it, because, so, I don't really-
Mr. Mayor, to do-
And it's why, it's why I said the words mattered, too.
If you use a point, I certainly have no problem just discussing these items briefly. Just my recollection was that the-
Point of order.
Commissioner Brady.
I think we have to go with whatever the clerk has on record. I don't think we can just decide later on.
Okay.
Think we said what we thought we said.
Yeah, well, I read from my notes. So I think Ms. Petrie was trying to re-articulate the exact way that I read the motion before I was told that the commissioners needed to make that motion, so she wanted to duplicate that, in effect. So I'm operating under the assumption that she repeated exactly what I said, was that we were not going to take action on those items. But I will defer to Mr. Francis. In the case that the clerk had written down that they were struck from the agenda, do we follow that instruction then?
I, so I, props to Commissioner Brady for saying, "Look, we got to go with what the clerk says." And as far as the mayor saying, "Well, I'm looking at my notes, and I know how I was going to articulate it." Well, you learned you can't make a motion. And the motion that Commissioner Petrie made, it doesn't matter if she meant to make the one that you wanted to make word for word. What matters is whether or not she did. What did she say? What was the motion that she made? Remember I said earlier, every word matters. So here we are, debating this, and again, we are now like 35 minutes into a city commission meeting, and there's going to be growing pains, but it matters. Every word matters. And when you have the clerk and you have experienced commissioners and attorneys and people around you who are saying like, "Yo, bro, you, you struck that. We tried to get you to not strike it. We wanted you to not do that. We said it was just going to be something to talk about, but you struck it, and now you're saying, 'Well, no, 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 I just don't want to do anything,' but I do want to talk about it, though.'" But that's not how it works. So this is my whole thing. I know it feels like I'm just going off on the mayor. I guess, it feels that way to me, but I'm not, it's not a personal attack. It's not me suggesting that he can't do a fabulous job. But I do feel like he lacked humility in this meeting. He was surrounded by experienced people prepared to guide him through this, probably expecting that he would need that. And, you know, like, "Let's work together," right? That's the whole thing. I feel like the commission, even though we have our divides, we kind of have the ladies and the men right now, the commission was ready to work with him, and he just wasn't having it. That's, that's my interpretation, so I think I'm going to leave it there. It's already been a kind of a long video. You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep score, like I said, because this stuff matters, and I don't know that, I don't know that anyone else is doing quite what I'm doing. And I hope it's helpful, I hope it serves the community. I honestly hope it helps the mayor. I hope it helps the city commission. I'm sure they're not going to pay any attention to me, but I, I, it's all meant to be, I want to be a contributing positive force to the community. So when I call things out, there are zero personal attacks, zero. I'm, I'm being very critical of some of the etiquette involved here, for lack of a better term. So anyway, yeah. If you enjoyed the video, give it a like if that's possible, depending how I uploaded it. Please subscribe to the Substack, consider supporting it. That helps me do this, right? I'm a busy guy, like, I want to do this, I want to help the community. But you supporting what I do is going to really further that. And if you think, you know, it's not for you, that's cool too. I still hope we bump into each other on the street and say nice things to one another. With that said, this is hashtag with here. I'm Tim Galbraith, and I'll, I'll talk to you soon.